At seven o'clock, we are convening from a closed session. I would ask the city attorney to report on that, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The city council was in closed session this evening regarding labor negotiations, and there's no reportable action on that item. The redevelopment agency board was also in closed session regarding counsel of legal counsel regarding initiation of litigation, and the council authorized the filing of a validation action.
Okay, thank you. As soon as the clerk gets here, we'll have a roll call. Roll call, please.
Okay, council members, Powers, here. Singleton.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Payne.
Here. We will have a moment of silent prayer, and I would ask you to keep in your thoughts those who are suffering in Japan right now.
Prepare to post their cars. Will the audience please bring me in the Pledge of Allegiance Cub Scout salute? I pledge allegiance to a flag holding the name of America, and a true republic for it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just for all. Car guards return to post. The audience may be seated. Thank you.
Is there anything the council members wish to call at this time? Okay. We have no presentations? Okay.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast with uninterrupted interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shore West Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel fourteen and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at nine AM. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
We have no presentations tonight, so if you would proceed with the public comment.
Agenda Government Code, Section five four nine five four point three. Members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt City limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Payne, distinguished council members, and I see you all tonight. My name is Matthew Padilla, and I still live in Elk Grove. I've been here the past few council meetings, and I'm going to change things up a little bit tonight. I'm going to be more trying to open up a little dialogue, but what I'm changing from is originally I was asking to have a medical cannabis farmer's market. I'm kind of shifting gears, and I'm asking you now to allow me to open a medical cannabis dispensary in the city of Galt. Obviously, within, you know, the designated area and all codes would be met. As I said before, I'm kind of trying to, this time, I'm not coming with a lot of figures and such as I did last time. I'm kind of just trying to open it up for maybe some questions that you might have, because I know you've told me several times that you're not interested, and the city of Galt's not interested, but I haven't heard why yet. I'm trying to present something that's going to be a revenue source for the city, and if it's done right, shouldn't have any type of, you know, negative police calls, anything like that. Everything's going to, everyone's going to be licensed by a physician who comes on the property and purchases medical cannabis. Do you have any questions for me that you might have about the medical cannabis field or market?
I don't believe so at this time.
So now, I asked in the past to have a meeting with you. You stated you'll have a meeting with me, but you stated also in the email that you're still not interested in my idea. If I set up with, and I understand because of Brown Rule, I can't have more than two council members at the meeting at the same time. If I set up individual meetings with each of you, would you be willing to meet with me and discuss this? And then again, I understand, I just want to talk about this. I'm getting a lot of silence and looks, but if the town folk want it, if it's the state of California wants it, and your public officials that are doing what the public wants, I mean, I don't know, I'm kind of at a loss what I'm working with here, guys.
I would suggest that you contact each council member individually, and that gives them an opportunity to talk to you or to look at their calendar. Tonight's not the time.
Oh, I fully understand that, but there and again, because I do have the five minutes, I'm just asking if anybody has any questions, maybe on, that they, I mean, maybe I can ask a question. What is it that makes you apprehensive about allowing me to open medical cannabis dispensary in the city of Galt?
Well, we're not here to debate.
No, no, I'm not, I'm just, I'm asking, I'm not debating, I'm just asking.
Like the mayor had already said, if you want to speak to us on an individual basis, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Because we are here with an open mind.
Okay.
Thing is, we do have an ordinance against that at this time, which was about in my old council.
Right.
We're just going by what we, the ordinance we have now, so come talk to us individually.
Okay.
Have you gotten a copy of that ordinance?
Excuse me?
Have you gotten a copy of the ordinance?
Oh, yes.
Maybe start there.
Yeah, okay. I'll read it, we'll go from there. Since I have a couple of minutes, is it okay if I ask any audience members, because they've seen me here a few times?
This is not the appropriate place to do that, in my opinion. The attorney.
Just as a point of order, Mayor, this is an opportunity for you to provide testimony to the city council. It's not a question and answer period.
Okay.
If you have information you'd like to provide to the council, this is the appropriate time to do it.
Okay, well, the only information I'll just fall back on again, the state of California right now is receiving anywhere from one hundred million to fifty million to one hundred million dollars in taxes. Think of the money that's being trickled down to your city. I mean, if this was a revenue source that was cut off, it would detrimentally affect the state of California. I'm just having you maybe look at the city of Galt and state, as you said, that you don't have to rely so much on money coming down to you. You could actually provide your own revenue and provide, you know, to pay for your programs in their city. Okay, well, I got a minute and twenty-four. Thank you very much. I'll be contacting each of you, and I hope that, you know, we can meet and have an open discussion about this. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Jimenez, and I live in the city. I requested to have Item Six on the consent calendar tonight because it's an important issue that needs to be discussed openly and with public comment. At the March first council meeting, this issue was put on the consent calendar and approved without any questions being asked by this council. A dialogue should have taken place at this time, if for no other reason for public awareness alone. Then on March second, the Sacramento Bee came out with an editorial that says pension perks that slip in the back door. Given the financial crisis facing the state and local governments in California, most people assume big public pension giveaways are a thing of the past. Well, think again, the Little Hoover Commission Report on pensions, retirement, released last week shows that just the opposite is true. Fifty-five, I'm sorry, the state has stopped negotiating such early required deals concluding correctly that they end up costing more over the long run. Then, on March fourth, again, in the Sacramento Bee, our mayor was quoted as saying, oh no, this move is going to save us money, which contradicts the Little Hoover Commission Report. Then, once again yesterday in the Sacramento Bee paper, the announcement came out about two positions that are being offered this golden handshake. Yet, at tonight's council meeting, this important issue is once again on the consent calendar. I would just like to ask, why is it the citizens of our town have to read in an out-of-town newspaper what's going on in our own backyard? I have consistently heard this council and other councils praise the city staff, saying if it wasn't for them, that we would be in worse shape than we're in, than we're in now. Wouldn't know what to do without them. So now there are two inconsistent situations. One, you just recently hired an assistant city manager and a high-level assistant for public works, all making good wages. Two, now you're going to let go of two managers. So how do these two inconsistencies move closer to close your budget gap? I don't get it. You hire and then you let go. Okay. What made this council and the city manager zero in on these two positions alone? What makes these two positions expendable and not the other staff members? The reason I ask this question is because there's a lot of rumors flying around this town that this move is a personal move against one of these individuals from a council member. People are already very suspicious of the government, so if these types of rumors have any truth to them, I can assure you that trust will be lost. This is exactly why these types of issues should not be on the consent calendar. They have to be discussed. Citizens have to be brought into the process. Citizens should not have, should have the visibility on the front end of these issues, not on the back end. They shouldn't have to read it in the paper first. After all, you're asking us to pay these pensions for twenty years. Also, if you do away with these two positions, they should be permanently unfilled. If not, what's the point? So if you want to answer any of those questions, I'd be happy to hear it, or I guess this is the awkward moment that always takes place at these meetings where nobody wants to answer anything.
Well, I think we've stated-
True to form.
We've stated before, this isn't the time for the debate. This is the time for us to hear you, which we've been doing.
Okay.
Carrie Cooley.
Could you turn up the mic? I can hear a work of this. Yes.
I'll do that, just one second.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. I'm here today on consent item number six also about the, mine's more focused, more focused objective, it's the cuts to the police department. I'm pretty disappointed that the city management would even suggest cuts to the police department with the measure R have been passed and us paying the extra taxes to fund public safety. I was here the night that the police officers and, I don't know if the whole department, I don't recall, but then when they took furlough hours, I was against that a hundred percent. In my opinion, we paid this, we voted for the measure R, passed, and we're here and we pay this self-tax. I try to spend as much money as I can in the city to fund the police department. I am, I'm a police officer in the city of Elk Grove. I live here in the city of Galt, and one of the things I like about the city of Galt is we do have a low crime compared to the bigger cities, and I appreciate that. And we start cutting our police department, I don't care if it's a sergeant position you're cutting, it's just you start, you start chopping away, and eventually, we lose that. And to me, that is unacceptable. Governments should only be here for a few things, and one of them is to provide public safety. The reason contract cities got away from the Sacramento County when they did was because the bull, the non-good public safety they had from the sheriff's department. They made their own police departments to increase their public safety, so that have a better response time by police, they'd have a better customer service from the police department that the county was not providing. We have that here in Galt. We don't want to start chopping away at it. And to me, police furloughs and police cuts at all are ridiculous, especially when you have city managers taking a pay increase. I don't care if that's contractual or not. To me, that's unacceptable. You know, you're going to cut department heads, I know they're getting a golden handshake or whatever you call it, I don't know, I guess it's saving the city money. I don't know how to look into all that, but when you start cutting positions and people and management are taking increases, I don't, I don't like it. I don't like to see it. And, you know, that, and I just found out from this gentleman that went before me about a new assistant city manager being hired. That's ridiculous. I mean, our city's not that big. I've seen bigger cities that operate with less management. It seems like we got a whole bunch of fat on the top and nobody to do the job at the bottom, and to me, that's ridiculous. And I'm just, that's my, that's all I really have to say. If we're going to have a tax to fund police, then you need to keep all police. I don't care if it's from the chief down, police need to stay there. They don't need to be cut. Otherwise, get rid of the tax and don't make us pay for it, and you won't see me here complaining about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Millie Shannonton.
I'm a very simple-minded, old eighty-eight-year-old lady. I just moved thirty years ago to Galt. I, I have a lot of questions, and I'm going to do like Judge Judy. Keep your ears open, and then you can tell me when I finish, and I'll try to finish in a hurry. I'd like to know who decides what person should retire? Is there an age limit or ability? Or is the park and rec the only office that's not making any money? I thought they were doing great. Who are you going to replace these people that you're letting go with? Will they have the ability, the know-how that these people have had? As I said, I'm simple-minded. I, will you be paying retirement as well as new salaries? And how does that make it profitable? How has, has there been much thought given as to what this all is going to, down the line, is going to affect? Or was this just the easy way out? Will the children still have their sports and their playground and all of the fun that they've been having after school because we'll have a new person? Will the seniors, like myself? Will there still be swimming lessons at the pool? Will we be able to go sit in the parks and see a nice park, or are we going to see nothing but dry ground and grass? You don't do a lot for your seniors now, so of course, that shouldn't matter. I want to thank you for hearing me out. I wonder if you really know what's going to happen, because this is going to cause quite a commotion, and I hope that it goes for a public vote, because the council, you don't own it. And with that, I used to be here all the time, but you gave me such a headache. I stayed home, and when you gave me a headache, I turned you off. So television has been wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Millie.
Al Baldwin, yes, you know, I live in Galt, and I'm very concerned about many things. And it's been a great community, especially of character. I've looked for a lot of things, and I've found truth and caring, even problem-solving. A lot of these things are character traits that a lot of people have. I did find out in the paper that there's going to be some changes, and three management jobs may get cut, but how did this all come about? So I've been coming to these meetings for quite a while, and some people may not even realize the background, and maybe I'm off on some areas, but you know, if you can correct me if you want to. Many years ago, we had, well, we had Randy and Barbara and Darryl Clare up there and a couple others, and they wanted to get an assistant city manager because they thought maybe we needed some, someone else to help Mr. Ted Anderson get some business in Galt to try and promote it. So they thought maybe a help would be by getting him an assistant. Well, there was a lot of controversy because we weren't in as bad a times as we are now, but we didn't want to spend the money, us, the citizens here didn't want to spend the money, because we didn't have a lot of money at that time even to do this. And so there's a lot of controversy, but nevertheless, it did get passed, it went through. So we looked around for a city manager, and we found a very good one. I think Jason Berman is one of the best. I really do. I think his personality is real nice, everything's great, but we had real controversy at that time. Now, we're running into another situation where the economy is even, well, I'd say a hundred percent worse than it was when we were looking for an assistant city manager. And, well, by the way, we didn't have a permanent attorney either, and we do have a nice attorney now, very intelligent, very good, but we had one, I guess, we either released or rented or whatever, but he came to the meetings, and it was working pretty good, but we thought maybe we should have one permanently, maybe it's economically better. I don't know. I wasn't involved with that at all, but we got a nice attorney here that's very knowledgeable, and we're paying him a salary too. Well, as time goes on, the businesses never really came to Galt, no reflection of Jason right now, because the economic times started going downhill, so we had everything in the world against us, and Mr. Anderson eventually retired and left, so it was a nice fit for Jason to move in. Well, we're back to the point again where we have an assistant city manager online now, or sitting up there part-time probably, and we're paying him on top of Jason and an attorney, and we're trying to justify the budget by getting, or, you know, getting rid of at least two men and to say, we need this five hundred thousand dollars a year, that includes benefits, to justify the budget. Well, let me tell you, the thing is, is I'm not too sure, maybe you have looked into how other cost cuts can happen, but maybe I'm wrong. I guess the city may be paying all the hospitalization for their employees, and if that's true, many of the other cities don't pay a hundred percent. They pay a portion of it. Then you might want to look around and check, do a little investigation before you jump to the fact of, let's get rid of somebody. The employees are suffering, furlough days, no raises, I grant you, but it's happening all over, but to eliminate a person or persons that's been in this town for umpteen years and has got the respect and the honesty that comes from that position or positions has been enormous. So I'm thinking you might want to take another look at this thing, possibly, it says, it may, with Galt may cuts, may cuts free management positions, so that doesn't mean it's permanent. Although you did take a police position and said you're going to save money by doing that, well, you didn't really take the, you took the title out, but the person is still there, and only because there's a law, measure R, that says you have to have a full force before you can hire any more people as a police. And so that's the justification of doing something like this, instead of eliminating the force, you just kept the force full, but you eliminated the salary and you pushed him down. Yeah, that's the strategy, and apparently, it must work. What I'm suggesting is that you look deeper and deeper and see what's best for the city, and money always seems to come into a lot of things, but sometimes money is in front of your decisions, and you may not look at what's happening when all this does come down the line. Our assistant city manager is probably going to have to fill in, and I'm guessing seventy, eighty, ninety dollars an hour when he works out there, plus working in here, getting whatever salary he's getting. So I'm not saying that you shouldn't do it, but I'm just saying you better look into it a little bit further. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Chapman. I live in the city, and I feel the same way the gentlemen do that spoke in front of me, and I don't really believe that by laying these two people off and hiring a assistant city manager, the city manager's salary is probably going to be more than these two men put together, and I just don't think it's a good idea at all. And another thing is if this tax that doesn't pass in June, there will be no sports at all at the schools, and there may, there'll be a lot of teachers gone and a lot of things ended, so you need to think about that too.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I'm in trouble, I'm getting over a bug that's going around, so if you can't hear me, that's probably why. And I'm going to break the rule. I know there's something that we've never, or that we tried to observe, and that's not getting into a debate, but there's just a couple of things I wanted to point out. One of them is the assistant city manager is a part-time position, makes nowhere the salary of a full-time person. And if anybody thinks that layoffs are, you go by those easily, you're wrong. I mean, whether you're a management person or whether you're a schoolteacher, when you get laid off, it's tough, and the people making those decisions don't do it easily. So I understand where you're all coming from, but there's a couple of things that I just wanted to comment on. At this time, I'm going to pull E-six from the consent calendar, and we will vote on it separately, and then we'll vote on the remaining consent calendar. Would you read that one, please?
This is E-six, California Public Employees Retirement System, two-year additional service credit program, two thousand and eleven. And if the council would like, Paul is prepared to kind of do a summary of the report to the council.
Would you do that, Paul?
Please.
I would like that.
Good evening, council. This is the second step in the process of opening this retirement period known as Cal Perse, two-years additional service credit. We did the similar program last year, almost to the exact date, in two thousand and ten, and we want to offer it again this year, and we did the first step two weeks ago, March first. And we did the first step, uh, two weeks ago, March first, which, um, made public the cost to the city. And tonight would be just where you approve the resolution and authorize the mayor to sign all of the certification that goes with the process. Um, the next step would be the retirement period would open, um, on March thirtieth and close on June thirtieth. Um, this complies with all of the public sections. The public, um, retirement system, um, government code sections. And I'm available to answer any questions or if you have any more, want more specifics about how the process actually works.
Any questions?
Um, comments?
Paul, there's a timeline right on this. Um, if things aren't approved, if it takes, how does that go with the deadline? Do we have a deadline on this?
Yes, the difference from this year, um, between last year is that CalPERS is going through a computer, um, conversion system. So they basically put a moratorium on retirements after June thirtieth. So we need to have the process approved tonight so we can fit in the ninety day period to be done by June thirtieth. If that doesn't happen, the next time we can offer this program through CalPERS is after the middle of September.
And the program, it only allows you to do two years. You can't do three or four, ten or twenty.
Exactly. Two years is the maximum that's, um, currently available through CalPERS.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions, comments?
Right here. Um, I, Mayor, I just want to confirm, is there any additional public comment on this item?
Is there?
Uh, Cliff Lofton, I live in the city of Galt, have for sixty-three years. Anyway, I'm coming from a little different angle here. Uh, it's not that, that I don't want these people, uh, to get their two years of retirement. It, it has nothing to do with that. Mine is from a standpoint that three of the new council people up here at the meeting that they had where everybody was answering questions, they wanted, uh, to have transparency and, uh, also wanted fiscal responsibility. And I think I heard all three of them say those statements. And what happened here was, uh, and I don't know if you guys read your packet from the last council meeting, but this was supposed to have been made public two weeks in advance of today. And if you look at your packets, at the back of the packet, it says, "I hereby certify in accordance with section seven, five, oh, seven of the government code, the future annual cost of these retirements, as determined by the sixth system actuary, in retirement benefits have been made public at a public meeting of the Galt City Council of the City of Galt on March first, two thousand and eleven, which is two weeks prior to the adoption of the resolution." And that wasn't done. In fact, this was on the consent calendar and it was item number nine and nobody pulled it to discuss it. Not a one of you had a one word to say about this. Yet, in your packet, it says that you certified that this was, that this was done. And it wasn't. So that's what I'm talking about, transparency and fiscal responsibility. Because if you guys wrote, read your packet, you would have read that. And this was supposed to have been done March the first and it wasn't done. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
If there's no other discussion or questions from the audience?
I, I just want to make a comment that that, um, the cost of the program was in the staff report on the March first agenda.
It was on the public agenda, it was on the website, it was everywhere made available to the public at that meeting. It was in the clerk's office, it was every, it was posted at the library, at the clerk's office, it was available at every, every place that we always have our public agenda available.
At this time, I would entertain a motion if there's no other discussion.
Uh, I move to accept the cons, oh, we're always on with six.
Yeah, number six, only the recommended action.
I, um, move we accept number six on the consent calendar.
And that includes adopting the resolution to grant the designated retirement period and to authorize the mayor to sign the certification documents, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call?
Vice Mayor Powers?
Hi.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
For the remainder of the consent calendar, is there a motion to, pardon me? Yes, please.
Okay, we have, um, six items remaining. Number one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March first. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. Number three, disclosure, disclosure of interest in real property within Galt Redevelopment Agency project area. Number four, a word of the contract for engineering constructions, support and construction management services for the Golden Heights Water Treatment Plan Expansion Phase Three. Number five, approval of the two thousand and eleven Certified Farmer's Market. Uh, we approve number six. Number seven, acceptance of the treasures report for the period ending January two thousand and eleven.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
In first and second, did roll call vote, please? Oh, is, was there any other discussion on this for the vote? Okay.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Moving on from the consent calendar, uh, we have no scheduled matters under the regular calendar. I'll be reporting on the strategic plan. This is something that we do monthly. Um, we set up at our workshop some time ago, a strategy for the next six months, objection, objective. And I will do my best to report on those for you. Um, page, let's see, the first one is what? Yeah.
Here, the first item to report on is recommend to the redevelopment agency board for action the issuance of redevelopment bonds by March fifteenth, two thousand and eleven.
That item is on, on target. Uh, the city, the redevelopment association, uh, agency, uh, approved respective resolutions for bond issuance meetings on two, one, eleven. Bonds were priced on Friday, uh, February twenty-eighth, with closing occurring on Wednesday, March second.
Actually complete.
It's actually completed. We're gonna move that from on target to the completed section.
Okay, next, um, present to the city council for action, a contract to hire a consultant firm to prepare a city of Galt retail market and site analysis.
Again, this was one of our objectives. The staff report completed for this, uh, actually, it's tonight, yeah. Um, this will be discussed a little bit further later on. And it's on target.
The next one is facilitate the Galt Herald putting online the community calendar for local events with a link to the city's website.
I totally lost mine. Yeah, I'm not going to go over every single one of them because we will be updating every month. Uh, and some of them are just strictly on target.
Right now, we're on page D, isn't David?
And you want to read it? Oh.
I did read it.
Okay. This one is on target. We've been working on a community calendar with the Galt Herald. Um, again, it's getting a lot of, of input. I've also talked with, uh, the high school and the elementary school and they're working towards being, uh, online with that with us. I'll, I'll read it, since we're sharing. The second item was to, is to facilitate a town hall meeting for citizens to meet and learn about city reps and departments and their functions and give their input. And this is scheduled, uh, for May. Again, it's on target. I have personally visited with both high schools and they're agreeable to this, uh, meeting. It's going to be more of a community meeting, a get to know your elected officials meeting for both the high school, um, elementary school and city council. Sorry about that.
Do they agree with them?
Yeah.
Okay, you're on E.
I don't have an E.
You don't?
No.
Here, the next one is present to the city council the results of the unmet transit hearing process, including recommendations if needed for appropriate actions.
Uh, this one I selected to discuss because it's been revised. We're waiting on CACOG to complete their, um, meetings on the unmet transit needs and then we will, um, report back on that.
Next, present a program or work plan and recommendation regarding budget appropriation to the, to the city council for action regarding new youth activities and special events for fiscal year eleven, twelve.
The Parks and Recreation Staff, uh, will present to the youth committee at their February meeting, which they did. Uh, and the youth committee is, put together a very nice PowerPoint presentation that they will be presenting to the, um, uh, Parks and Recs Commission regarding their budget tomorrow night. Where are we? We're done? We're done? Okay, that was just a report. Um, the next item?
Mayor, mayor, before we move on, may I suggest as a recommendation so that the public could follow that maybe we could work with staff and put this onto a PowerPoint program? Because that way, when, like, you have a cold and one of us could, well, I'm seriously, but, but one of us could help you. And don't blame me because she has a flu, she's already tried that because I had it last time. No, but I mean, I think that might help us if, if council concurs with that.
That's a really good idea.
We had talked about maybe doing that, I think that would work out great.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. I agree.
Uh, the next item is use of the city seal. If you'll recall last meeting, we had Patricia St. James make a presentation, uh, asking for the support of the city council for the, uh, drug, um, is it drug and? Uh, alcohol prevention coalition. Um, at this point, she would like to, um, have the city approve their support so that she can use the seal in her, um, brochures while applying, applying for grants. So I would ask if there is a motion to do so.
I will make that motion, but we do, I think it's a good cause.
Thank you.
That's, okay.
Can I just intersect something here?
If there's some discussion.
Oh, yeah. Um, I have no problem with it all, but, uh, when, uh, they're gonna apply for grants and all that, do we get to see it first before our seals put on it? Or we're just giving our cart blocks and put it on it whenever?
That wasn't covered. I think we could make that a stipulation if you want to.
Stipulation, I would agree with that.
Yeah, not that I want to police everything they do, which is, but, yeah.
Will we refer that to our attorney?
Yes.
Steve might have a comment.
Um, yes, you can certainly, uh, make, make that request to the, uh, to the agency.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure they would adhere to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We need to amend your motion to reflect that as part of the condition.
Okay.
If you wanted to make it a condition or you probably could just informally make your request.
Yes, and, yeah.
Okay.
Just make the request, Bill.
Okay, sounds good. So we've had a first and a second.
True.
And, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstention? Motion is passed. Wow, this is my night to talk when I can't talk.
Yeah, definitely.
Uh, the next item, item number three, is Constitution for the Lobby. We did have a citizen that quite pointedly asked if the city council members had read the Constitution or when was the last time. And I had to myself admit that I haven't read it since I was in school, just sat down and read it. And I'm quite confident that there's quite a few of you out there that are the same position that I was in. So I felt like it was important that we always keep that in the back of our minds. So we are proposing to purchase, um, a copy, a framed copy of the Constitution. And I would also like to add the, the Bill of Rights or the amendments, which is really pretty much the heart of what, what people are interested in. Um, so I would ask if there is a motion or a question on that?
No, I'd like to make the motion. I think it's a great idea to put both, actually.
Okay, can, uh?
That question.
Yeah, uh, when we looked at them, we saw the bigger ones that we thought that we were going to be good on there. It's, uh, it comes from more than two hundred dollars. So I was just kind of thinking if we could just up the money a little bit since we're going to do two now. And, um, you know, the bigger, the better. And the biggest one was two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And they're like two by three each, and they're framed and that and, so. Any other discussion or questions about this item?
We need to include the price or not to exceed, whatever? Yeah. Jason or, yeah. Do we have an approximate individually or, or as a bundle?
Two sixty-nine plus tax and shipping.
Six hundred dollars.
I, I would say maybe six fifty or not to exceed seven. I'm not sure what shipping is on.
Right, the amendment.
Yeah.
So not to exceed seven hundred would be?
That would cover it, yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion on that?
Um, make a motion, that we do that now.
Thank you.
Oh, amend my motion to not to exceed the seven hundred.
And the second?
The second.
Did you amend your motion also?
Yes.
Okay, we, uh, we'll have a roll call vote on that.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Now we will move to the city attorney's office for a report and he gets to talk.
Okay, um, good evening, mayor and council members. First, I want to apologize for the, uh, thick staff report. You know, Greg always has the thick staff report, so I wanted to be the one this evening. Um, we first visited this item back in the summertime, uh, pre-election. And as I, as I informed you back in, in the summer, uh, the city's campaign finance laws, as they're currently on the books, are not consistent with state and federal law. Um, those laws were adopted by the voters back in two thousand and two. There's been quite a lot of, uh, litigation at the state and federal level since then relating to, uh, this area. And the result of those cases is that what we have on our books is not, uh, in keeping with the federal and state standards. One of the difficulties we have because this was voter approved is that it's not very easy, uh, to change the law. Um, this ord, any amendments to this ordinance would in fact have to go back to the voters. So what the council decided to do this past summer, uh, was to give direction to the clerk and myself not to enforce certain provisions of the law. And I indicated at that point, uh, in time that I would be bringing back this issue to the city council after the election, uh, to see if there was any, um, permanent solution that we wanted to, uh, to consider. So the purpose tonight is not to ask for any council action. Um, it's a fairly complex area and I just wanted to bring it forward tonight just to reintroduce the issue to the city council. When you start looking at local campaign laws, there's basically three areas that they, they focus on. One is disclosure of information, you know, where the, uh, who, who's making the contributions? Who are they making the contributions to? Um, the second area is expenditure limit, uh, limiting the amount of money that people spend on election-related topics. And then the last area of the laws is to limit contributions. As it relates to disclosure laws, there's, there's generally not a problem. The courts have been pretty, pretty supportive of disclosure laws because there's a lot of benefit in having that information out to the public. And then they can, the public can decide whether or not, uh, they are, um, swayed by the, um, the contributions. can decide whether or not they are swayed by the contributions, who's making the contributions, or the amount of contributions. So disclosures are typically not an issue. As it relates to expenditure laws, which limits the amount of money that candidates can spend buying television ads or publications, those have been held to almost always be unlawful. Because by limiting the limits on expenditures, then you're basically telling a particular candidate, you're restricting their ability to get their message across to the voters. So in that area, pretty much uniformly, the courts have held that expenditure limits are not allowed. Which leaves us with the contribution limits. And this is where there's been the most amount of litigation. And contribution limits are also a form of expression. You know, by a member of the public giving to a particular candidate to help them get their message out, that's a form of political expression. And the test, whenever you're limiting political expression, is pretty tough. The government has to show that there's a very important governmental need in imposing that restriction. And that the restrictions that the government is imposing are very narrowly tailored. So what the most recent cases have held is that contribution limits are okay, but usually only in the area where you are limiting the amount of money that is given directly to candidates. Because the purpose typically presented for that type of limitation is to avoid corruption, that if folks are given money directly to candidates in large amounts, the concern is that that would lead directly to influencing that particular candidate. So the courts have upheld limitations in that area. But when we get to areas like contributions to independent expenditure committees, political action committees, the recent court decisions have not supported contribution limits to those types of organizations. And our ordinance does in fact impose those types of limitations. So that's the area that, where we have the most concern. As I indicated earlier, there's no action being asked of the council this evening. At a future city council meeting, I'll come back to you with some options for addressing this issue if you desire to address it. Obviously, one of the options is going to be to do nothing. But I just wanted to restart the dialogue this evening, and I'll be back at a future city council meeting. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the councilmembers? And I would just comment that as thick as this is, I think we are going to need a little more time on it. Thank you for bringing it back. Next item is Community Development Department.
City of Galt Annual 2030 Galt General Plan and Housing Element Progress Report, 2010.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, members of the audience. The item for you tonight is an annual report that is presented to the city council, which is a summary of the city's housing element, as well as its general plan, and the status of those various elements. As you'll recall, there hasn't been a lot of change. We adopted the general plan a couple of years ago, 2009. We're going through and implementing certain goals and objectives identified in the plan. This document highlights those achievements that are consistent with the general plan goals and objectives. In addition to that, it provides a summary of our housing element implementation and progress, which has to do with affordable housing mostly. The document also identifies a number of accomplishments that the city has achieved in the calendar year 2010, identifies redevelopment activities that the city has undertaken, indicates that we were in the process of the sphere of influence, which was adopted actually this year, and that will be reported in next year's report, as it was done in January, but it is noted in here. We simply have to present this to both Planning Commission and City Council for review and comment. If there are additional comments the council would like to make, please direct staff and we will incorporate those. And we have to have it filed with the State Department of Housing and Community Development and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research by April 1st. That's why I stayed presented tonight. There is one typo in the document. It said that the council would hear this on April 5th. It is being heard actually tonight, which is March 15th. So with that, that concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Did I miss the verbal report from the Planning Commission?
I'm sorry. The Planning Commission heard this last week, and they recommended acceptance unanimously.
There were no comments?
No specific comments.
Nothing to take care of? Any questions? Council?
No, it's a lengthy document. I just need a little more time to review it.
Well, I did have a couple of questions. On page four, the table, what stands out, and I just needed an explanation, was housing. Date of adoption of major revision was 6/5/03, and there's a comment that the housing element is under review by HCD.
Housing and Community Development. That's correct. They, that was submitted to them approximately a month and a half ago, the updated version of the housing element. As a matter of fact, I got a comment letter back yesterday. And in working with the consultant and responding to those comments, that will come back to the Planning Commission and ultimately the city council for your review, consideration, and adoption.
This one, the date of adoption was so different, 6/5/03?
Yes. When we, the housing element update runs in cycles. When we started the general plan update, it was not part of that contract. We had anticipated finishing the general plan update in two years. It actually took five years. So our focus was on finishing that document. Once that was done, we started back on the housing elements to get it into compliance as well and get it adopted.
Okay. But we're in good shape, right?
Yes.
Okay. The other question I had was, on the next page, page five, under pending amendments, says, ma'am, however, the city undertook an update of the city bicycle transportation plan, which should be completed in early 2011. Is that completed?
It is complete. This portion of the document was written before that was done.
Okay.
So we can make that, we can...
Update that?
Update that.
Now, will you update it now, or will you do it in the next report, next year's?
I'll make the correction with council's approval before we submit it on April, before April 1st this year.
Okay. And then on page 14, policy number 11, continue to implement a residential code enforcement program. The description says, continue to implement a code enforcement program through the code compliance officer, operating primarily on the complaint basis. Is that a true reflection of our policies?
That is the objective, and I would have to double-check the actual document, but I believe that is how it was originally stated in the existing housing element.
So are you saying it will stay that? Because I don't think that's our policy.
No. In practice, we are not operating on a complaint basis. We are, it is proactive.
Exactly.
This basically sets forth a minimum standard for the city to address code compliance in residential neighborhoods. It doesn't mean that you can't go beyond that.
Well, are you going to be leaving that as it is? It bothers me that it's written down like that when actually it doesn't reflect what we are doing, being more proactive.
I will have to, I can check the updated document to make sure that it does reflect the proactive nature of code enforcement. But this simply reflects what is in the existing housing element, the one from 2003.
Gotcha.
So we can't change that.
Okay. Thank you. Those were my questions. Anybody else have any questions on that? And this is just, this is just a report? Or is it something we need to take action on? We do need to take action on this. So we need a motion to accept and report and direct staff to submit the report to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research and the Department of Housing.
Make motion to accept.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We will now, oh, communications? Do we have any written communications? Nope? Did you have something? Okay. Then we will adjourn to the redevelopment agency and roll call.
Board members, Powers?
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Payne? Here. Public comment?
I have no speaker sheets at this time.
Consent calendar, would you read that, please?
Yes. Our first item is approval of the minutes of the meeting of March 1st, 2011. Next item, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants. Next is approval of the treasures report for the period ending January 2011. And last, the disclosure of interest in real property within the Galt Redevelopment Agency project area.
Any questions on that? If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
One second.
Roll call vote, please.
Board members, Powers? Aye. Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye. Under recommended action, the board of directors approve the consent. I would have done that. For the departmental part of that proposal from Buxton Company, do you, city manager, do you want to introduce our presenter?
Sandy Akirio is going to be delivering the staff report. I know Lisa is also here from Baxton, will be delivering the report, so I'd like to turn it over to Sandy.
Thank you, and good evening. I, like the mayor, have a voice issue tonight, so I apologize in advance for that. I will share my cough drop with you. As background, in 2008, city council adopted the economic development roadmap for Galt, which was a plan recommended by a task force of the Chamber of Commerce, local businesses, city staff, and city council to retain, expand, and attract the right mix of businesses for the city. There were a number of actions for the city to take in that effort. Since those actions required a certain level of industry expertise, staff has been working with the Buxton Company to negotiate a proposal that will assist us in those activities. The Buxton Company was founded in 1994. Their purpose was to help national retail and restaurant clients find customers who are a good match for the products and services that they sell. They use a proprietary process that combines the latest retail market research technology with a vast amount of data available on demographics, psychographic profiles, and consumer spending habits. That allows them to then predict the performance of a given retail location by predicting the behavior of the customers in that trade area. In 2002, Buxton broadened its client base by adding public sector clients, like the city of Galt, who are interested in economic development. They use the same analytic information, but use it to review a city's current retail assets to see if they meet the needs and demands of its citizens and what gaps need to be filled. One of the unique aspects is that they will also share that consumer spending habit data with local businesses, so that local businesses can see where they may be missing out on sales. The scope of services we're recommending for approval tonight is for a two-year term. That gives us some time to get some momentum going. This tends to be a fairly slow process, at least in the beginning. The first major task will be for Buxton to determine Galt's retail trade area and evaluate its retail potential. This will take place within about the first 60 days. The staff has to get them some data that they need. It involves a number of steps. First is they develop a trade area map. Unlike most trade area maps you see that just put sort of mile rings around a city, the trade area maps that Buxton will design are based on drive times, so it takes into account traffic volume, inconvenience, ease of travel, and the type of retail that's being solicited. They will also conduct a retail leakage and supply analysis. That will show where dollars are being spent outside of our trade area, which is our leakage, and where money is coming in from outside the trade area, which is our surplus. Again, that's information that's valuable to the city, but it's even more valuable to existing businesses, so it'll help them retain more of the market share. They can see where they may be missing out on some sales. A third step is what we call customer profiling. Buxton will analyze each household in Galt in the trade area based on 75,000 psychographic categories, which are things like lifestyle preferences, purchase behaviors, that sort of thing, and various demographic characteristics. They then put those households into one of 60 market segments and create a community psychographic profile. They can then match that profile against retailers to see where those profiles match up well. When Galt comes knocking at the retailer's door, we can then have hard evidence that shows that they can be successful in Galt. Buxton is also throwing in four very specific retail site assessments. So in addition to sort of analyzing the community as a whole, they will look at four distinct geographic areas within the city and help us find specific retailers that would work well in those environments. Staff, and the staff report has recommended the four, but we would obviously like the city council's concurrence with those four locations. The first is the Old Town District. I think everybody knows generally where that's at. The second will be Lincoln Way Business District, Lincoln Way between A and D or E Streets, that general area. Third is the Simmerhorn Site, which is east of 99, between Simmerhorn and Basell. And fourth is Twin Cities Road, Corollian Boulevard. It would be both sides of Corollian Boulevard. If council would prefer that we look at other properties, please include that in your motion tonight. The second and probably most important task that Buxton will do is to find the best retail matches for Galt. They're going to take all of the data, match the city's profiles against all of the retailers that they have in their client database, and then give us a final list to focus our recruitment efforts on. They will also assemble individualized pursuit packages for us that we can then send to those retailers. And it sort of also is a good housekeeping seal of approval to have Buxton tell those retail clients that Galt's going to be calling, and we've already sort of pre-qualified Galt, and we've determined that they match what your needs are. After the first year of service, Buxton will actually refresh that data and then conduct a rematch to see if any market conditions have changed and to help us decide whether to proceed in another direction. A third task that Buxton is going to provide involves both a hospitality potential analysis, looking at the hotel industry, and a healthcare analysis. The healthcare analysis they're throwing in at no additional cost to us, we can see where we stand based on industry and statewide standards, as well as compared to 20 similar cities. And the final, and the final deliverable product is what we call a consumer propensity report. That is where it shows the lifestyle product and psychographic likelihood indices for consumers within the Galt trade area. They update that frequently. They have 32 major categories, such as apparel, household goods, dining, et cetera. And then there's 4,800 different line items within those categories. So this is the information that Buxton has also agreed to share with our Chamber of Commerce. They will do a free training session with the Chamber of Commerce and its members to show members how to use that information. It will be linked from the city's website. So that will be invaluable data to local businesses that probably can't afford to have that data, to subscribe to those databases themselves. Some miscellaneous services that Buxton will provide is city staff will have unlimited access to their proprietary database, that they call Scout. That will allow us to run various reports and marketing tools on our own. We can also look at things beyond retail, such as, you know, what a neighborhood's recreational needs are, what, you know, if the kids are interested in BMX and they subscribe to Equestrian today, we kind of know what the interests are in that neighborhood, so you can focus down and drill down to that information. Finally, just the ability to talk to the experts on Buxton staff, which are available to the city for the costs provided in the proposal. And the city also has the opportunity to meet with appropriate retail clients at the Annual International Council of Shopping Centers Meeting, which is a well-attended event by retailers. The financial impact, the cost for the services outlined in the proposal is $60,000. That includes all of the noted deliverables that are in the staff report, plus the two years' worth of professional support and access to... years' worth of professional support and access to the software tools. They have waived the $3,000 setup fee and the $1,000 a month maintenance fee for Scout during that two-year period. After the second year, we then have the option to continue with Buxton by paying $1,250 a month for Scout access and continuing staff support from Buxton professionals. Otherwise, the contract can be canceled any time with 30 days' notice. We are requesting a budget appropriation from the recent sale of redevelopment bonds to pay for the Buxton contracts. Assuming that is approved, this item will be revisited during the next budget cycle to see if city council wishes to renew that contract. Lisa Hill is the Vice President of the Community ID Division at Buxton, and she's here tonight to do a very brief presentation. I know most of the city council has seen this a couple times, so this is mostly from members of the audience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. That was a very thorough staff report. Thank you. Yeah, so, Councilor, Councilperson, staff, about how we, analytic tools, using analytics for efficient and effective strategies. And as Sandy highlighted, you as city leaders are striving to improve the quality of life of your residents. You're looking to better understand what amenities you could provide, become a proactive partner to your local business owners, transit-oriented developments, community services that could be offered, and any number of things that you're doing to improve quality of life. And we work with you to improve that intelligence. We provide analytic tools utilized in the private sector by over 2,000 retail clients, like FastPro, like McCormick &amp; Schmick, Walmart, Lowe's, to understand where their store location should be based on core consumers, to better understand how to market those consumers, to reach out and increase the value of that consumer base, and to understand similar types of consumers to market directly to. We also represent hospital systems, so we do have market intelligence based on healthcare information. Healthcare information being very important, not retail-specific, but very important to you as a community and quality of life. Understanding the aging populations of people, whether or not you could support an emergency care facility, whether or not more beds should be supported within your hospital, more cardiovascular surgeons, so on and so forth. So, it's certainly information that's not limited to retail and to business retention. As Sandy mentioned, we work with communities across the U.S. We have over 100 clients here in California that we work with on various projects, and to help them understand retail as well as business retention. We have been successful working in California, landing over 35 million square feet of retail space in four years. That's about $6 billion in increased annual sales tax within those client cities. So, it is a methodology that works. It's a reverse methodology that uses the same tools that we utilize in the private sector to help you better service your residents. We empower you with answers about who your citizens are, where they are, what they require, and how their needs are changing over time. It is beyond the scope of demographic information, which is fairly limited. A lot of times, by the time you get it, it's old, and it only tells you, it only paints kind of a black and white picture of who these people are. We look to bring color to this picture about who your residents are. We also update this information every eight weeks, so it's much more, it's a much more aggressive approach to understanding, rolling snapshots of your community and how that community is changing over time. So, one example would be looking at a resident, Tom King, who's a new resident. He's a new mover to your community and may look different than some of your tenured residents. He has young children. He shops at Barnes &amp; Noble. He dines at Payway. He's independently conservative. He's on a company medical plan. His children play baseball and skateboard in the park within .2 miles of where they live. Those types, that type of information so that you can better service this person and separate him from an older resident who's been in the community for 35 years, who's on a fixed income, who's a middle-of-the-road Democrat, who is interested in birdwatching from a community services standpoint, shops at Target, dines at Wendy's, and there are over 75,000 individual characteristics associated with every one of these people. Now, the way that we know this is that we are one of the largest purchasers of consumer spending habits in the nation. Our information sources are over 250 different data sets. We are experience-only U.S. partner, which gives us Equifax, it gives us in-source files, we look at Simmons data, and we are able to, from household level up, really understand these people at a granular level. Acculturation, second-generation Hispanic, third-generation Chinese, and really what that means to you as a community in terms of servicing them. It comes from the way that people live their lives. It is looking at subscriptions, looking at magazines, looking at whether you own or lease your vehicle, your utility bill. We're constantly leaving behind data about ourselves, and that information is the type of information we purchase to better understand people across psychographic segmentation. Psychographics being lifestyle, media habits, and purchasing behavior of those people. So, again, not looking at your neighborhoods, but being able to look at each household, at each dot on the map, and answering questions about how can we better service these people? What do our initiatives mean to them? And how can we make sure that we align those initiatives with each one of those households within a specific area? So, we're looking at annual spending from a retail standpoint. We're taking this information, and we're looking at the way retailers typically choose locations across the U.S. So, average square footage requirements, do they franchise? What are their core consumer counts that they need? Do they currently have stores on the ground in markets like yours? These are, these are all answers, or questions that you have when you go out and look to recruit retail, and we're able to answer those questions for you. You can take a rifle approach, as opposed to a shotgun approach to recruitment. From a city services standpoint, we're able to tell you what these people are interested in, whether they utilize the park, whether they utilize the library, and how you might optimize the services within your library. Do they utilize mass transit? Do they commute out of the community? And what's their average commute time? So on and so forth. Again, with the healthcare, looking at shortages, surpluses, specialties across the board, and holistically being able to look at your community, being able to differentiate each one of these people, how your community is trending. Are you trending older? Are you trending younger? Did you support a retirement? Village, ethnicity? Are you diversifying? Presence of children? So, answers to the question is, what is your city today? What do you want your city to become? And what is the strategy to get there? And here is the analytics wheel applied. So, I won't go any further. I know you guys are fairly familiar with this process. I am available to answer any questions that you might have, and certainly this is going to be an ongoing partnership, so you'll be seeing a lot of me, should we choose to work together.
Thank you. Are there any questions? We have met with you before, but it is good to see you again tonight.
I just want to ask one thing. How do you collect all that data on individual households like that?
We actually purchase the data.
How's that? I don't like to collaborate, real quick.
So, companies, so think about the way that you live your life. You have a grocery store reward card so that you can get savings when you go out and purchase groceries, and you swipe that card. Well, in order to get that card, you filled out something that had your address.
So, that's like reward cards, too? And that kind of thing?
That's right. So, we purchase that information from entities that collect that data. Grocery stores make more money selling that type of information than they do selling groceries annually. So, it's valuable, it's powerful, and it helps people understand what consumers are doing in today's environment.
That's why I'm a wall of full reward cards.
Very good brother, isn't it?
Yes.
Any other comments, questions? That was a good question. I am going to ask the city clerk, if she would, to read the recommended action on that, it's quite lengthy, before we vote or before we make a motion.
Okay, there are a couple different, I think we have four different recommendations. The first will be to adopt a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute a contract with Buxton Company for professional services to create a strategy for targeted retail development and provide access to the data and tools necessary for ongoing implementation. Number two, approve the $60,000 budget appropriation from Redevelopment Fund 93, which is bond sales for said services. Number three, approve staff's recommendation, recommended four geographic areas that will receive specific retail site assessment beyond the community-wide level analysis provided in the contract, which is Old Town, Lincoln Way, Simmerhorn Commercial, and Twin Cities Road, Corollian Boulevard.
You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to approve?
My motion will approve.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Roll call vote, please.
Before we call for the roll call, I think there was somebody wanting to add a comment from the public.
Mr. Guthridge, would you like to come up to the podium? Thank you, Councilman Shelton, for noticing that young man.
And thank you about the young man part. I think one thing we ought to think about is big box stores and where they're going to be located, and I would cheer be taking in the piece of property, let's say is north of Twin Cities Road on the west side, because you've got six, well, 300 to 400 acres out there, but let's face it, most commercial is always on the right-hand side as you come into the town. That's why the shopping center we have on Twin Cities Road does so well. And so, I think, I think that ought to be added to the list of places that they should be looking at. Thank you.
Actually, I think that's a good recommendation, but go ahead, City Manager.
No, I think if you wanted to change it, and I don't disagree with that, I think what I would recommend is there is another site already up on Twin Cities, the Corollian one, which is a little bit further.
Include that?
Well, I would, I would just move that site, so move it down, Twin Cities closer to the freeway, and encompass that instead of the Corollian site. And the site that he's referring to isn't in the city limits.
That's right.
Right now, but it is in the sphere of influence of the council, was more interested in studying that area as opposed to down Twin Cities closer to Corollian. You can certainly do that. In order to add a totally second, separate area would increase the cost of the study.
I would move that we change it.
And just move that one, move down, Twin Cities closer to the freeway?
Because it is across the street. I mean, that's my recommendation.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
We accept it?
Do we accept the items with that change?
I would accept it.
Thank you.
I said second already, now we can amend it, because you already had a motion.
Yeah, you need.
You already had a motion.
You have a motion by Councilman Cruz, second by Singleton, and you can ask them to withdraw their motion since you have another motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought Councilman Shelton had made the motion originally.
Oh, they did.
I did. But I will draw the motion.
I will draw my second.
Now?
Just change your motion. You can amend it to include the four items with the changes that the city manager talked about.
Is that your desire, Councilman Cruz?
Certainly.
Okay, good.
Then I will resecond. I second it.
Okay. I think we're on track now.
Question from staff? Is that appropriate direction for you? Okay.
And I have a motion from Councilman Cruz, seconded by Councilmember Singleton.
So, now, is there any other discussion? If not, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Payne? Vice Mayor Powers?
Be devoted.
Vice Mayor Powers?
So, we're tired.
I'm sorry. Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion is passed.
Mr. Guthridge, thank you very much for bringing that up.
Adjourn and reconvene to City Council at this point, and then I will, for the city clerk's report.
At this time, I just have a few reminders. There's a special Parks and Recreation meeting here in the council chambers tomorrow night, March 16th, at 7:00 p.m. There's a beautification committee meeting on March 17th, at 3:30 p.m. in the City Hall Community Room. On March 24th, the Commission on Aging will have a meeting at 5:15 in the California Room of the Parks and Recreation Facility. On March 28th, there is a bi-monthly Public Safety Committee meeting at 7:00 p.m. in the Pachetti Community Room at the Police Department. On March 30th, there is the second community workshop for the Central Galt Corridor, 6:30 in the Littleton Community Center. On March 31st, City Hall will be closed for a holiday, and that, oh, on April 4th, we have a City Council Youth Committee meeting at 6:00 p.m., and that takes us to our next meeting on April 5th.
Thank you. Is there a staff report or comments by staff?
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
Not tonight.
Okay. Comments by city council members? I would start with Councilman Shelton.
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to remind everyone that there's a lot, we talk about the youth, there's a lot of good sports, there's track going on, there's soccer, you know, at either school, take your choice. If you need something to do in the afternoon, the games usually start at track, and usually if we have them here, they start at 3:00. We're doing a lot of traveling with Galt. I say "we" because for some of you that don't know, I'm one of the volunteer coaches, and I really enjoy it. But with soccer, usually the games don't start until 4:30, 5 o'clock, so it's well worth going and watching those kids, you know, run around, run, the rain and the mud. Hey, if anyone hasn't noticed, I'm wearing green. There's a holiday this week. Well, anyway, in my family, there is, it's Father's Day, so celebrate it, and if you do, do it wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
I have nothing this time around.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Yeah, I just, I did want to say something. You know, you have a new city council here, and I'm hoping that I can appeal to some of our constituents out there to come and get involved in the things that are going on in the community. I think that we're a council that sees the glass as half-full, and I think we're looking for some really good solutions here to make this a better town, and we'd love to have other people coming here that also want to be part of the solution. So, I would encourage people to come to our city council meetings and to call us up and talk to us about some concerns you might have, because we are here to serve you.
Good time.
I was just waiting for acknowledgement. Yeah, I got a couple things. I just want to say that I attended last Sunday a Boy Scouts Awards at the Estrillita Ballroom for Eric Levy, made Eagle Scout. It was a very good ceremony. I was very proud of the guy. I've known him for a little over a year, year and a half, something like that. It was a great ceremony. Also, I'd like to appeal to the public, there's another good friend of mine, his name is Ron Casado. He's a truck driver here in town. He's lived here all his life. He's come down with some medical issues of a brain tumor, and we are doing a benefit for him on April 9th at the Estrillita Ballroom. I've already started donating, and anything will help. He's undergoing cancer treatment over in San Francisco. They're doing a dinner at 5:30 to 7:30. They're doing a raffle. They got live entertainment. Sorry, my eyesight's not as used to be. Holy Ravioli's already donated $500 worth of pasta for this dinner. Coca-Cola has contributed all of the soda for that event, and, again, it's going to be on April 9th. Dinner will be starting at 5:30 to 7:30, and then live entertainment afterwards. I understand that they have, they're going to have a raffle. They're raffling off trips. People have really been very gracious and donated a lot for this young man. If you don't know Ron Casado, I've known him. I met him through working with B&amp;D here in town, driving a truck, a great, great guy, young man. If you, if you could help out, we would sure appreciate it. And if you have any more questions about that, I don't have the number, but you can call my office. Tom Stribling is helping out with this benefit dinner, and he can give you more information. Just call my office, and I'll try to give you the number. Leave it with the city clerk for you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not going to push my luck, so I don't have any comments tonight. At this time, we are going to reconvene into closed session. We weren't able to complete our business, and then we'll come back afterwards to report any reportable action.